I know, yeah.
Yeah, if you would, just to check on her. I'm like, it's not like her to not be here. So I will call for other business items. So we will go ahead and then and move down. So I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Alright, so it's been moved by Kathy and seconded by Eric.
Rachel, will you record?
Yeah.
Is there any discussion? Alright, I will then call for the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, we will move down to department reports. So I know PD will only report at the beginning of the month, so we'll jump right down to City Hall. Forgot. That's me.
And you've agreed it.
Yeah. Alright, so Eric's request to have the overages listed on our water sewer bills separately has been taken care of. Sarah was able to coordinate with Visions and have that, so hopefully it'll it'll break up correctly. We'll keep an eye on it. And the Shoreline Master Program that we had a grant for back in 2020, I think, was never completed, and so I've been working with the Department of Ecology to pick this project up where it was kind of left off. I think COVID and staff change, it just kind of fell between the cracks. But I will have to go through the SEPA process and do another public hearing, but getting that Shoreline Master Program completed will be will be good for our comp plan. Carly and John have been working on reviewing all the water meters. So we've been having some issues with consumption, and I think Jay can speak more to this. And over the last couple of years since we switched to Harmony, our consumption reports don't match, and they're very, 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 very off. And so Carly and John went out and checked just about every meter just to make sure they were working correctly, they were recording everything. I think they found two or three that needed to be replaced. And so once we're able to get the others looked at, there was a couple with like dogs behind a gate or stuff that was over the meter. We will call Harmony and set up a meeting with Visions so we can actually figure out where the issue is coming from. Letters regarding property maintenance were sent out to residents. The initial results are positive with noticeable community engagement. A lot of residents have been out there mowing their lawn and just driving through Toledo. It looks it looks a lot better. That's really it that we have. Civic Plus I haven't heard back from yet, but we should have our our draft really soon, which is kind of exciting. That's all I have. Anybody have any questions for Rachel?
What about the yards that aren't being included?
So Sarah's actually been working on that, and just so everybody knows, the way it usually goes is a resident will come in and complain about a neighbor. From there, we have them fill out a complaint form, and we will put this on our list of drive-bys, and Sarah will drive by and make sure the complaint is valid. We send out a warning letter, and the warning letter says, hey, can you please take care of this by this date? And then we just keep up on it. So that's part of the iWork system that we got for permits. It actually has the code management side too. So we just do weekly drive-bys. There's a couple of houses that City Hall, like either Sherry will say, hey, you guys need to go look at this house, or we, you know, residents, it's usually resident initiated, so we just give them more time. And then a second, if we don't hear anything, a second letter will go out after that deadline and letting them know that the next letter that goes out there will be a fine. And so then we have Winlock PD issue a citation. Usually it gets done. We've only we've only issued one citation since I've been here, so it's not that bad. Any other questions before we move on? Alright, we will jump on into Public Works.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Crow. I'm a Public Works Assistant. For the most part, the past few weeks, all of our daily tasks have been performed without any major issues. That said, we did have a four-inch cast iron water main break on North Fourth Street intersecting with Silver Street. We we fielded a resident complaint, or not complaint, but they noticed water coming up out of the ground. And we kind of anticipated, just by locating stuff, that it would be a one-inch service line. After we dug it up and traced it, we found that it was a four-inch line. Thankfully, we were able to repair it swiftly, and we didn't have much downtime. That said, if you were a nearby resident and you experienced some brown water coming out of your faucets, that was just due to the just due to the water being turned off and back on. Some sediments can come through that way. The water is still safe. Just if you were experiencing that, you just flush it and it should be back up and running. Our second round of P-Fos testing, the results did come back with no detection matching the first round, so we're all good there, I think until next year. Fantastic. Yes, it is fantastic. That was new territory for a lot of the drinking water municipalities, and well, we weren't sure what to expect. That said, everything's good. As far as inventory goes, no significant progress has been made. That said, we were able to we were talking to Sherry regarding the deadline that we were given last meeting, or one of the last meetings. And we think that's reasonable. It's just be on the second half of it. She said, mentioned end of September, I believe, and we gotta kind of get through this Cheese Day stuff, hydrant testing, and paint and all that. So we didn't forget about it. We're still, we have a plan. As far as our other stuff goes, Connor's continued prepping the curbs. He's been maintaining the boat launch in some of our other mode areas. The hydrant thing, we, John and I went out ourselves and kind of opened up 12 hydrants in the downtown area out of 45 that we do have. We're still in contact with the fire department, but now we got, our our plan is to coordinate with both the chief here in Toledo, and he got us in connection with the chief in Napa Vine who does official hydrant testing, training to people. So our goal was to coordinate all of us together so that both the Toledo Public Works team and the fire department team could be all trained officially and all be on the same page as we test the hydrants throughout the town, so they can get all of their pressure numbers. And there's a lot of interesting stuff that goes into it on their end, and we just wanted to kind of integrate that part of it. That said, the chief here in Toledo is on vacation, kind of overlapping with John, the other Public Works member, is also on vacation. So we're missing some key people in order to get that training in the way that we want to have it integrated. So that's something that we did run into, still in contact with them and still trying to figure out how that's going to overlap with some of our other expectations. But that is something we're actively working on and hoping to get done. That said, in case you didn't hear me mention it, John will be gone for two weeks on vacation. And approaching that, he is the operator for our wastewater and drinking water side of things. So we did have the Winlock Water Sewer Superintendent Rod come over, and he kind of familiarized himself with our facilities in case of emergency, following that Winlock Public Works HLA that we filled out earlier in the year. That's all that I have for that side. And then I, like Rachel mentioned, I have a little bit more to kind of read over from John and Carly's testing of our meters. Over the past several weeks, city staff Carly and John completed a citywide audit of water meters to verify that analog meter readings matched the automated readings captured by our system. Most meters were accurate. There were a few issues identified, and like Rachel said, I think it was three, and we did get them replaced. And then, other than that, there's just some access challenges. As just a general form to the public, the city does need access to our water meters at all times for several reasons, this being one of them. And still working on that. And then the next steps, Carly has started to update MXUs and Visions to ensure data is reflected in Harmony. And yeah, I think that's about it. I think the general consensus was that the meters are not faulty, and that our issues lie elsewhere within the software. Anybody have any questions for me?
So John's on vacation as of this morning?
As of, yes, last Friday, yep.
That's why I gotta call at 7:30 this morning. About three vehicles lined up waiting to get water.
I think, I think that was.
They were there. I know eight o'clock is the expectation for them, I think, although y'all are usually there.
Yeah, we're there at 6:00 AM. Today was kind of a miss, today was a particular day which I had to come in later because of a prior engagement that I, and then I just didn't, forgot about that portion of it.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright.
Thanks for cracking a dozen water meters.
Yes.
Water.
Hydrants?
Hydrants.
Yeah.
Alright, so we will go ahead and move down to council reports. I have nothing to report. I'll jump over to Tony.
Is it appropriate to talk about Jesus?
I mean, it is city-related.
It is coming, and anybody who'd like to volunteer, we are still looking for volunteers for all kinds of things. There's mostly new leadership, and we're all behind a learning curve, so. Much appreciated.
Blind weed grows very fast. I'm sorry, my meters were covered with about a garbage bag full of blind weed. That's it.
Anything to report?
Other than there's a community Red Cross Blood Drive this Friday held out at the LBS Church.
Perfect. Alright, so we'll jump down. So committee reports, I know Planning Commission will be meeting this week, and there are still vacancies on that board, so if anybody happens to know anyone who would like to jump in and make a difference in the community, this is their chance to do so. No members, does anybody want to speak about the park board?
I can give you an update on what happened at our meeting last night.
Well, come on up. I know, I hate making you get up and.
When I have drugs, no cane needed.
Alright. Say your name, please.
Sandy here, member of the park board, new new member of the park board, was installed at our last meeting. At that meeting, we talked about the park comprehensive plan. It looks pretty good right now, so you should be seeing it soon. And we talked about the walk in the park for Esther Borg's memorial. Lots of plans in the work there, like you say, digging up volunteers. Aside from that, we were talking about the required classes that members of us on the board need to take. And so that's pending for this month because there's a 30-day time limit on that. Other than that, it looks pretty good. Oh. I believe Eric is the one who is donating a giant cribbage board to the park. So we talked about where it would be, and Mary was going to go out with Cindy and see where a good place to put that would be. We have lots of questions, and sounds like an exciting idea.
So a correction, Mary's meeting with Tim Tinder.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Please attend.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
Dr. Herwin, is Esther Borg's the walk in the park date? September 6th.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Alright, so we will go ahead and jump on down. No special presentation, so any public comment on our agenda items? Alright, we will go ahead then and jump right on into new business. So starting out with ordinance number 823, an ordinance of the City of Toledo, Washington, amending sections of Toledo Municipal Code Chapter 1-4 concerning the procedure for passage of ordinance and publication of past ordinances. Amending sections of ordinance numbers 474 and 517 is necessary in providing separability and establishing an effective date. Entertain a motion?
Make a motion whether you pass ordinance 823.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved by Eric and seconded by Kathy. Is there any discussion?
This is just cleaning things up and aligning that with with RCW.
I can, I think I can answer that. This is making it so that unless it's something of importance, we only have to do one reading. So anything monetary or bills or that were required by state law to do two readings gets two readings. We have so, and I think the reason for this is we have so, we're gonna have so many of these, you know, we're changing, making minor changes throughout our codebook to go with the new code, that it'll just help us not have K number of new business items every reading.
Yes, and streamline through it.
Streamline.
Just one reading unless it's something we'll be having.
And I did have a question. Did I have a comment to myself about explain publishing paper? We're not, we're not publishing everything to the paper, right?
Any ordinance does have to be published.
And is that, that's normal?
Yep. Yeah, and the one reading was suggested by our attorneys as well, Marissa's. So there's no reason unless it's required by state law to have two readings. It's just, it's taking up time.
And if it's not making massive changes.
Yeah, definitely kind of a specific one if we're affecting the residents monetarily in any way.
Yep, yeah.
That's how I read it. I just wanted to confirm.
If there's no further discussion, I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, so we'll go ahead and move down to ordinance number 824, an ordinance authorizing the City of Toledo to utilize a collection agency for collection of delinquent accounts owing any debt to the city, establishing conditions and procedures for referrals and providing for the addition of collection fees to the debt owed.
I make the motion that we pass ordinance 824.
Moved by Kathy and seconded by Tony. We'll go ahead and open it up for discussion. You know, we did have one question on that. I know there was a list of the delinquent accounts. Are those all recent, or they? No, we have, they're all, yeah, they're all, they're all over the place. We do have one, this $3,000 one that, we have a lien on it. I believe the liens are supposed to be done annually, and you can only lien sewer utilizing a collection agency. We'll be able to collect on any money owed, and there's a process there, and it's really simple. And then we would just mark up that bill. Mm-hmm, to cover it, and then they do what they need to do, and yeah.
Can we talk about the process just a little bit?
Yep.
So tell me, at what point do we get to sending it to collections?
So let's say someone moves out, we send out a final bill, we give them 30 days. If they don't pay within that 30 days, the collection agency can send out a complimentary letter for us that says, hey, this has gone 30 days past due. You have another 30 days to settle this debt, or it is gonna get reported to the credit agency, or we can send it out on our end, but you just have to let them know there's that additional 30 days of this is going to collections. And then they will take over it after that 60 days. If they don't have, they'll skip trace to try to find addresses if we don't have, because some of these are old, so they'll be able to find, you know, updated contact info. It just takes a lot of it off of our plate, and it gives us some more teeth, like either paid or it's going to collections.
So say I don't pay my bill on the first, I got until the 30th, but you're gonna tell me.
This is only for closed accounts, so we're still, we're not changing the process of, if you still live here, you still rent, you still own your home, we're still gonna, it's a spider. We're still gonna do everything the same. This is when people have actually moved out, and they don't care if we shut their water off because they're not there.
That makes a lot more sense. I was just wanting to make sure that we weren't jumping straight to.
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not gonna, this is, and Sarah did really good at attacking a lot of the debt. I mean, there was a lot of them where there was landlords that we could turn around and go after.
The accounts receivable.
Right, so it's, it, you know, it's kind of just playing that game, but we can't transfer it from one account to another. And it's free to us.
I did see that we get 100%, they tack on 40% after 31 days when they start.
Yeah, they'll tack on that 40%, so that'll just be something that we have to update in our fee schedule, which we can get that.
So if it goes to collection and collection sends them a letter and they pay, it's just, it's just 100% of what's out.
Correct.
And then after 31, I think I read it after 31 days.
The first 30 days is with us, the second 30 days is letting them know that it's going to collections, and so that's still all 100, that's a complimentary from them. So we'll probably utilize that, just.
Sure.
And then if they pay, it'll go straight to us. They can also, it also lets them know they can call and make payment arrangements, because it's, you know, 30 days from that last touch conversation or, you know, bill or whatever. And then the 40% gets tacked on once it's officially gone to the credit agency. And in that letter, it will say that there will be an additional 40% fee added on once it goes to collections.
So they can, in that 30-day window that they send out complimentary.
They can still pay.
Here to make payment arrangements.
Correct, yes.
So basically, they have 60 days.
Yeah, and we get our 100% if any money gets paid, so their their fee comes from.
That they have to put out of work.
Yeah.
Good.
Great.
If there is no further discussion on this, I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. We'll move right down into the Fairway Collections Contract. Entertain a motion?
I move we accept the Fairway Collections Contract.
I'll second that.
Moved by Tony and seconded by Eric. I'll go ahead and open that up for discussion.
Here's where we missed, Jamie.
So they work with Vader and Centralia, they're a local company. I worked with them through other businesses too. Yeah, they're pretty easy. Yeah, they, they're very easy.
Something flying around.
It's a spider's spider still.
Did you want the gavel?
No.
Do we have any, anybody have anything to add to the contract? No? Alright, then I will go ahead and call for the vote on the contract. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. It is, and they really are an easy company to work with. Alright, we will move on to Resolution Number 328A, a resolution of the City Council of Toledo, Washington, authorizing the donation of two surplus city clerk desks to the Toledo Historical Society. Entertain a motion?
I move we accept Resolution 328A clerk desk donation.
I'll second that.
Been moved by Tony and seconded by Kathy. Any discussion on that?
So is the Historical Society is kind of a special case in the in the state already, isn't it? Or should I donate a dollar to them so that they can pay us a dollar and not have to go through hoops?
And the items aren't really worth anything, so I think we're good. The way our procurement policy is written, if we're gonna donate it, it's, it just needs to have all the the resolution and the paperwork done. And this is like the original clerk desk.
Oh, I know it's junk.
Yeah, and I think they had it here over there when I first started, and it's just been.
Flooding.
Yeah, so. If we have no further discussion, I will go ahead and call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Alright, motion carries. Okay, we will move into the next one. Resolution Number 326A, a resolution of the City Council of Toledo, Washington, declaring certain city-owned personal property to be surplus and authorizing its sale in accordance with city policy.
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 326A and get rid of the junk.
I'll second that.
Moved by Eric and seconded by Kathy. Is there any discussion on this one? Everybody happy to see a call? Now we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Next up is Resolution Number 327A, a resolution of the City Council of Toledo, Washington, declaring certain city-owned personal property to be surplus and authorizing its disposal.
I move we accept Resolution 327A trash surplus.
Second that.
It's been moved by Tony and seconded by Kathy. Any discussion? Again, just happy to get it out of the back. Alright, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. We'll move down to the next one, which is the Art Gallery Special Events Permit.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Art Galleries 505 Special Events Permit.
It has been moved by Eric and seconded by Kathy. Is there any discussion? So we did, I did have a comment brought in earlier that this is just being turned in. The, we're gonna have to make an exception for the two-week notice for the surrounding areas. It is pretty commercial out there, so that just needs to be stated. There's not two weeks before their event. I think it just needs to be, yeah.
I move to amend.
And that we will.
Bypass the two-week notice?
Yeah. Can you get a second?
Sure, I'll second that. Kathy, second it again.
So is that a new, is that a new portion of this permit?
No, it's, it's on the application, yeah. That's one of the things that was missed.
It's in four days, yeah.
Alright, any, do we have any discussion before I call for the vote? Alright, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So the next one up would be the Water Main Repair Bid. We do not have all of the information on that, so I would say we table that to the next meeting when we have all the information. Next one up is the State Route 505 Guard Rail Discussion.
I have no idea. There's nothing, nothing on that picture.
Yeah, so there, there's the the brief on there. And there's the little, I think the little round circle, I think, is maybe where the car went. Yeah, there was a highlighted area right here. So there was a car apparently that went off that road and down in, you know where the trampoline and the pool's at up here? And so a car drove off of it and like went down into her yard. So I think we just need to, and I know it's not something that we can do, but get a guard rail put up. If it's icy, I mean, people are supposed to be going 25, but we all know that there's people that don't. There's kids that play in that area, and it does just, it's like just completely drops off. So I just wanted to get the okay to put a letter together and bring it back to you guys to have them put a guard rail up on the highway.
To WatchDOT.
Yeah, and I don't know if I really needed guidance for that, but I figured I would just throw it up just so I didn't waste my time putting it together and then have you guys not want it to get signed.
I suggest you reach out to Carol Birch. She's really good at talking to WatchDOT.
Yeah.
And then in two years, when you have the rail up, then you can say thank you to her.
My only question in regards to that guard rail is will, what will that look like impacting any future sidewalks going up there?
Yes.
Because it's gonna, you're not gonna have as much room to go out with that guard rail there. So you wouldn't be able to continue the sidewalk. If we can do the sidewalk up the north side of 505, we wouldn't be able to continue to go if there's a guard rail there. So I don't know if that's something else that we can maybe look into, other options other than just a regular guard rail, if we could add something along with a sidewalk, maybe?
Maybe it's rather than getting straight to WatchDOT, it's just opening the topic and starting to figure out what, what it's gonna be, yeah. I don't know what the setbacks are there and where the hill starts off the top of my head.
Yeah, that's, that's the hard part, because it is such, it's drastic. It is, it, yeah, and it's, I mean, it just completely, yeah, completely drops off into her front yard. Kind of surprised that there's not been more cars in all of my years here. Yeah. I know, but I'm like, it, it's.
I know. But I'm like, it, it's a little strange.
If you guys maybe wanna look at that, drive by it, let me know kind of what your thoughts are so I can, because she's, again, she's got young kids and that's pretty terrifying to see her kids out there playing.
She knows nothing fast is gonna happen with Watch Dot, right?
Yes, yeah, she's aware. I just told her it was something that we would look into just because.
Yeah, I mean, there's not, I mean, we can open the conversation with that.
Right, and I told her, I also told her she should probably contact them herself, um, but that I would, I would try to attack it on my end, but there wasn't much. It wasn't a city, a city thing.
And Sherri, you know, if, if the, uh, if they did it on the curve, that, that wouldn't affect the straight of going on Five Oh Five, right? Because I mean, if I'm looking at somebody's gonna go into their yard, they're coming this way.
I'm just not sure if they will try and go further down.
Yeah.
The curve. That's my only concern.
They were going towards the school. And so they like ran down her hill and then just drove, continued to drive through her property and took off.
How did they miss that? That's like a drastic shift if they're trying to go towards the school.
No, they were driving down the road towards the school, so away from.
They're going down, is that so?
Five Oh Five. Yeah, they were going like from the river towards my house.
Oh, they're going up. They were headed out of town and they went off the river. Because I'm thinking if they're coming down the hill.
That's even trickier.
That's even trickier.
Cars or.
I don't know. They're, I don't know.
Yeah.
But it happened.
So then again, that would put the guard rail here, thinking along those lines, because they were going up the hill, not down the hill.
Where's their property line? They could put a burn in, I mean, if they've got that setback. We probably need to measure the setback.
Well, if you guys can put eyes on it and then kind of get back with me and let me know what your thoughts are. Like I said, I told her to reach out to them as well, so.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Um, so we will go ahead and jump down to the next item, which is the Winlock PD Car Discussion. Would you like to speak to that or would you like me to?
We should just get rid of it.
Yes, um, so we, we have had the Winlock PD Car here for a couple of years now. Um, we are not using it, we will not be using it. It is something that I think we should consider really getting rid of. It's taking up space and if we're not gonna do anything with it, there's no point in keeping it.
And we're not, we're dead set from the fundraiser, because we bought it for a dollar.
Yeah.
It just needs a lot of work. It's an old car. It's like an old Crown Vic, I think, right? And it, the gas gauge doesn't work. Um, the seats don't go back and forward, so I'm not sure why it was purchased, but, um, when I drove it from where we picked it up to down here, I mean, it, it, it needs a lot of work. And.
It'd be great for a demolition derby car, just saying.
Yeah, we should just get rid of it. I mean, we bought it for a dollar. It's, it's in their way and there's not, I mean, we could, you know, um, get all those stickers off of it, the PD stickers, and use it as a public works car, I guess, if that's, but we have trucks for that. And I, the car is gonna need a lot of work.
You could have used for a backup. So you wouldn't be losing that. I mean, you know, if we de-badged it, you did have, you did have need for a backup.
But we're gonna have to put work into it before we can put a city employee into it. I mean, the gas gauge doesn't even work on it. And it's just scary.
So we could de-badge it and use it as a fundraiser. I'm gonna bring that up again. Cheese Day is a little close, the Cheese Day people could.
I'm not opposed.
The Cheese Day people could what?
I might ask.
Five bucks to beat up the car for, for a couple of minutes. We'd have to take Winlock off of it. There you go. It's a fundraiser. And then, and then after that, that money could at a minimum pay to have it towed off or maybe somebody else for it.
You putting that fundraiser together?
I'm not, I have nothing to do with it.
You do it. I don't know, I just, yeah, we just need to do something and not.
Regardless, I think we have to spend a couple of minutes de-badging it, right? We have to pull, is there still any, there's not, is there lights on it?
Everything on it still, yes. That needs to be completely decommissioned.
Do you need a motion to get rid of it?
I think so, yeah.
Well, I mean, if that's the direction that you guys wanna go in, then I can put together a resolution for it. But I figured we'd have a discussion on it first. I mean, if you guys really wanna do a fundraiser, then.
Cheese Days.
We'll surplus it for a dollar if we can.
What's the liability of flying?
We can also, I mean, we could also.
That's up to Cheese Days.
We could also.
Cheese Days said no.
I mean, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna surplus it, I mean, we can put it up, we can de-badge it and put it up for, you know, at the auction. I'm still kind of waiting to hear back on the, the motorcycle, um. I was trying to transfer.
Ten dollar bid, because then he could beat it up all he wants.
Yeah, yeah.
Outside city.
And that's, I mean, we can do, we can do a sealed bid for it and I think that would, you know, that would work.
That's a good idea.
There's different options that we have. Um, I think I'm just gonna send the bike to Richie Brothers for auction if I don't hear back from any local.
Do you need to get a resolution on that?
No, I already got it.
We haven't had.
Yeah, we got, yeah.
I like that.
Um, what's, can you, um, bring a resolution back for next meeting for the car?
Yeah, I'm just having fun.
Alright. Okay, so next item up is the Historical Society Request. That one I will need.
I'll make a motion that we give the Historical Society space in the back, given the appropriate liability coverage and no guarantee of opening a Historical Society.
Just for storage?
For storage.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved by Eric and seconded by Kathy. Is there any discussion on it?
Uh, when I saw the Grayne Osborne thing, I was a little worried that every time we reached out to Grayne Osborne, it cost us money.
Grayne Osborne, I spoke to Mike personally and he said that unless he hears it from my mouth, he's not going to do work that is gonna charge the city anything. So.
Because that has been a problem.
Yeah.
So they're, they just want to store things back there.
Yes.
For now.
Yes.
Including the desks that we just gave.
That's why, I think that's why the desk got put in there before this got, yeah.
How convenient.
Just curious.
No, yeah, don't have to move it very far.
Yeah, I mean, we could, maybe we could find it at the very back or something. Maybe they could move whatever's there out of the way and.
I'll go back there and stuff around. I'm, yeah.
Like, uh, keep your stuff here at your own risk kind of thing.
Well, I'll give them like a, a spot, um, that we are gonna have to go through, I believe the public hearing process for the, like, whatever it's gonna, whatever storage costs, kind of like we did with Head Start. Um, there'll still have to be some kind of hoops to jump through.
It's under conditioned space, right?
Yeah, and we'll do, yeah, and we'll do like a, there's no cooling or heating back there, so I'll get with you tomorrow or something, Joe, and we'll move forward on that.
Store at your own risk.
But yeah, I'm trying to get everything, Cindy and I hauled off a bunch of cardboard and there's just piles and piles of, of junk and trash, yeah, so. And as I was going through, I noticed even the trash has to have a resolution to ditch it if it's logged to inventory, so.
So I'm gonna go back a couple of years to, because it, it was kind of my dream a couple of years ago to turn this into a hallway. Right, that goes back to the back, extend this back a little, because this is really your, in a building in a building right here. And extend the building in a building back and give the Historical Society a place so that, you know, they could open this door and there'd be a separate door to the council chambers or, or we would just lock up all the computer stuff.
My PD is the back door. Because this is attached to the PD.
I guess I was more talking, I was more talking like going forward long-term, when PD goes away, you know, and this becomes a larger space, if this is the space we keep.
Yeah.
Um, but Grayne Osborne kind of messed that up with the, they didn't wanna take any risk, four and a half million dollars, you need to just rebuild the whole thing, um, study that they did. So I don't know, you know, where that takes us.
I think there's some updates that can be done in the back that would get that back area usable.
Well, I think making it not be so giant and open would be very helpful.
Do another building inside of a building.
It just, yes, actually, no, no, just continue this back. Because our, our, you know, we've had times when this space is too small. So this wall could go down and move back another ten feet. And then, you know, another, you could, and then you could have storage, you know, you could have another storage room, maybe behind that, you know, so this whole thing could extend back farther.
If we built it back far enough, we could take down the existing outside structure and just build another structure over the top of it.
Well, you don't have any outside walls. It's the only thing this is missing. It has, I mean, you've got trusses, you've got trusses in inside walls.
One of those boards, the building's coming down.
So.
Yeah.
Mike, I mean, it still could be a thing.
Could be usable. Definitely not something to take.
I'm done worrying about it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I hear what you're saying.
Because then, you know, then this could be maybe used as a public, as a public space and.
I think that, I think the Historical Society was wanting to actually put some funds into what needed to be done for that back area themselves in order to be able to open up. Um, Joe, if you wanna come up and kind of speak to that a little bit, I think that might be helpful since it's kind of a double.
Just probably should.
Go ahead and state your name, thank you.
This is probably more Mike's purview as to speak, because he's actually the president, but he's not here, so, um, I think I can, all the multiple discussions we've had, uh, the idea is that we really need the storage right now, because we're losing the space at the library. But we've always had the dream of when the, uh, food bank went away, that maybe we could turn that into, uh, you know, a museum to help the city too. Tourism-wise, they do bring in a lot, you know, into the community, so. Just the fact that it's cultural and, you know. So we don't have the funds, we don't have a major fundraiser at this time, um, because it would take away from everyone else. Everything that we've been able to come up with is either a date's being used by someone else or, um, you know, it's a thing that they already do. So we would like to do it not only, but yes, the idea is to fix it up and do that. Yeah.
You know, once we get the PD, if, if we get the PD area completely cleared out, that's about the size you had at the library. So it's not very big, but I mean, that, then, then you have an outside door and it could actually be something positive for the city.
Yeah.
It's awfully tiny and it's laid out pretty.
It is, I think.
Really awkwardly, yeah.
You could probably remove the office completely. It goes, it goes all the way around back here.
Yeah, there's a storage area that they have.
So I would just like thinking of that, that's probably the nearest to success, because we do need to clear that whole thing out anyway.
That's gonna.
It's gonna be right, it's gotta.
It's gonna, yeah, we're gonna have to get other police departments and all, then records. Yeah, it's gonna take a lot of time.
Oh yeah, that's not a quick thing, but you gotta have a path.
But just to let you know that I think we could do it, um, I have a certificate, um, of museology from the University of Washington, which is actually, uh, museum studies, because I didn't wanna do all the other things. I was only wanting to do what I was interested in, which was museum studies. And, um, when I worked for the, um, museum at DuPont, it was very rough. It was in an old butcher shop that they had extended out the back. And, um, I did a four hundred square foot, um, area of exhibits and we received the, um, David Douglas Award from the State of Washington for that. So that's going up against all of Washington State, so that's, that's a big deal.
I'd be happy, you know, I'd be happy to help extend our, 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 our building and ability, building and to do the framing and stuff. And I know that we have a lot of people in town that could pull it together as a volunteer and maybe the, you know, maybe the Lions Club could pull together some funds so that we're not doing a, you know, we're not doing, having to do what cities have to do when they have jobs done and they cost four times as much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because framing's easily, we got somebody in town that does sheet rock.
Should we do a workshop on it?
We should do a workshop on it, yeah.
Okay.
Next month?
Okay.
So we do have a motion on the floor to at least accept the Historical Society's request.
For storage.
Yes, for the storage. So I will go ahead and call for the vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, perfect.
Alright, and so we, we need to get, um, liability insurance.
I'll contact you tomorrow. Yeah, there'll be a couple of things that we, a couple, we gotta jump there, so I'll give you a call tomorrow. If you don't hear from me, just call me.
Okay, sounds good.
And I don't recall where, uh, I don't, I don't recall where I saw that, but I know that like the, uh, historical, a city's Historical Society is kind of a special entity. So, you know, as far as just using the storage space, if we're not paying for electricity, then I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll, I'll check everything out and see what loopholes we have, yeah.
If it's not costing us anything.
Exactly.
No money out, not be a gifting of anything. Alright, so we will move into unfinished business, which is the second reading of Ordinance Number Eight Twenty-Two. An ordinance of the City of Toledo, Washington repealing and replacing sections of Toledo Municipal Code, Section One Dash Fourteen Dash Three as codified in the Toledo City Code nineteen seventy-nine, um, One Dash Fourteen Dash Three, and the letter dated fourteen dash twenty dash two thousand, repealing and replacing all other ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with the provisions of this ordinance as necessary in providing per separability and establishing an effective date. I would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept Ordinance Eight Two Two.
Alright, been moved by Eric and seconded by Tony. Do we have any more discussion since this is the second reading? It is. Alright, I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, perfect, motion carries. We'll jump down into, um, other business. First item up is the mid-month workshop. So it sounds like we do wanna do a workshop in July.
After Cheese Days.
We have one topic, yeah. Cheese Days.
So we will go ahead and set a workshop for the second meeting in July.
I think it works pretty good, keeping it short and sweet, rather than it's a hard block.
Yeah.
Gets a little tiring after a long meeting that follows.
Yeah, and I have the budget schedule I'll give to you guys in your next agenda pocket. It's got like when we'll have the public hearing, when we'll do our workshops and all that stuff, so.
I just remember last year you said you, we wished you, you, we started earlier.
Well, I'm gonna start at the same time. It was just getting public works to get me their numbers, so. I'm watching you this year. No, Joe wasn't here last year and he likes the expense side of it, so I think it'll be fine starting at the same time, but yeah.
That was all my concern. Yeah, they can either tell me what they want or I'll just give it to them.
Um, alright, next item up is the Vision Toledo Cheese Days Special Event Permit. And.
That's for the wine and cheese permit.
Yes.
Do we need a motion to get it passed?
Because this was not one that you guys signed off.
So we do need an updated, um, insurance certificate from them, but. Did this one have a liquor license with it, Cindy? Did you see that one come through? So did you have a liquor license coming out? Oh, yep.
There it is. It's in there.
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept the, uh, Vision Toledo Cheese Days, cheese and wine request.
With updated cert.
With updated cert.
Been moved by Eric and seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion on that?
Thank you for keeping us straight on that.
That was Kyle cut that.
Okay, if there is no discussion, I will go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. So we will go ahead and jump down to the next one, which is Public Input.
You basically covered what I wanted to discuss earlier, was the TIB, I'm not sure if it was in conflict with your guard rail thing. It might also be something that you can go to the state and say, hey, we have a TIB, we think that a curb here will stop this. Do you wanna expedite our sidewalk for us?
Yeah.
We have cars crashing into buildings. Can we put in a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't need the guard rail if you have a sidewalk.
And then my other question is, the water main repair, is that the main that's going across the highway, like right in front of the shop?
No, it's the one that was exposed a couple of years ago.
Okay.
It comes down from the well.
I noticed the other day, the highway is almost buckling in front of the shop. I don't know if something is making its way up or not, but there is a clear crack in the highway, like right in front of the shop, sort of right where the water main would be, so.
I'm gonna check that out.
So that, that one comes down.
It's like through.
It goes two directions from the, from the well. And the one that comes straight to town is the one that's uncovered. With a couple strategic logs in the way, so if a tree falls.
Because I don't, I don't know if it's the water or the gas, one of them right there is there, but there's a very clear.
Fun.
There's a hump in the highway now.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry.
Any other public input this evening? Any other public input this evening? Alright, no executive session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.